Our guests today, we have with us three representatives from the Chamber of Commerce, Bob Durkin, President of the Chamber, Amy Loyster, and Bruce Reddick. Here today to talk about economic development, a little bit about where we currently stand, where we're going. So I'm just going to turn it over to you and then we will have questions as the presentation goes on.
Green button, lights on, you're on.
Got it, thank you.
There you go.
Hi, again, I'm Bob Durkin. I'm President of the Greater Scranton Chamber of Commerce, proud to represent nearly 500 Scranton-based members of our organization as we speak here tonight. One of the things that we want to do, sort of set the stage, you may recall that we and the city came together with ultimately 30 full partners several years ago to create a revitalization plan for the downtown central business district. So what we'd like to do tonight is to talk a little bit about economic development in the framework of that original plan and some of the key provisions that were identified, some action items that came out of that plan, and how we think some of the actions and economic development incentives that are on the table right now and things that are rolling out can ultimately allow us to try to live the value and opportunities that are identified in that plan. So with that, I'm going to ask Amy to sort of lay a framework here, again, referencing what you have in front of you, which is a pullout from that revitalization plan. Again, economic development, workforce development, and community development were the three important cogs in that plan. So today, we want to focus specifically on the economic development pieces of that. So Amy, you want to grab it?
Good evening, thank you for having us. The document you have before you, the 2016-2020 briefing sheet, really just specifically talks about the economic development components of that plan. And what I wanted to touch on tonight are really two, two action items within the economic development section that relate to abatements, incentives, what worked well, what didn't work, that we've noticed over the last years in our economic development toolkit. The first action item relates to local improvement zones, or really taking a look at state and local level programs or concepts that can be used for business attraction, sustainment, and growth here in the city of Scranton. What we did was, we asked the Institute for Public Policy to put together a study for us on the LERTA program compared to other sister cities across the Commonwealth, who has LERTA? We currently have LERTA in place within the city of Scranton, who has it, who's using it currently, and how is it working? We also took a look at the KIZ program, the Keystone Innovation Zone program that's currently in place within the city, and how that's impacting entrepreneurship and business startups within the central business district. We took a look at the Keystone Opportunity Zone program, that's an initiative that we had in place several years here in the city of Scranton, and what the success rate of that was. And Trips Park development was a perfect example of how the K Oz was a success and the impact it had on the city of Scranton. And Bruce is going to talk to you a little bit more about that as he presents here with you, with us tonight. And the other thing that we're taking a look at, which is new, is the Economic Opportunity Zone program. That's the federal program that's going to happen, and we're still to be determined, looking at guidelines, seeing how we leverage that program for business attraction here in the city. Action number four also relates to looking at spring growth here within the downtown, taking a look at our vacant buildings, what needs to be redeveloped, how do we take that abandoned space and retool it, reuse it for job creation and growth? And again, we used the K Oz program, the KIZ, LERTA, and took a look at those, and it felt that they all worked well. And what do we use as we look to the future to do attraction and growth? We met with the mayor the other night, or the other afternoon, to speak with him and his staff regarding the update, and he is having Jessica Ezgroul take a look at the LERTA legislation that's currently in place, currently. Any questions for me before I turn it over to Bruce?
Not yet.
No?
I do have a few, but we'll wait until...
Okay.
Well, let me briefly talk about action number two, because that's something that we talk about all the time, is trying to reduce regulations and permitting fees and to make the city more business-friendly. And one of the things we talked about at a private meeting was the creation of what I call the pink zone, which is basically a zone, possibly downtown, where red tape is considerably lighter, where the regulations are more user-friendly, where somebody can come in within that pink zone and leave here with a single piece of paper instead of 20 pieces of paper and a permit that takes a month. So that's something I think we want to explore a little bit more if we can, and maybe work with the chamber on that as part of action number two. So that's just a comment more than anything else. Okay, thanks.
Excellent. Well, thank you for having us again here tonight. I'm going to jump over to the other handout that you have in front of you titled "The Proposed LERTA Enhancement: City of Scranton Community Revitalization Plan." And I'm actually going to jump down to the bottom, and we talk about what is the effectiveness of tax abatements, and are they truly effective? So the first bullet point talks a little bit about what's happening in other parts of our state here. And Lehigh Valley Live.com, they actually credited LERTA with creating over 4,092 full-time jobs and bringing in over $9 million worth of tax revenue to both the city of Bethlehem, as well as Northampton County, and two different school districts, that being Bethlehem and Saucon Valley School Districts. That source, obviously, as you said, relates back to the commission study that the Institute for Public Policy and Economic Development that Amy had mentioned. And then if we look at the Philadelphia model, which I think most of us are familiar with, since their implementation of the LERTA abatement, there have been 20,000 properties that have actually taken advantage of new construction or undergone improvements/ conversions. And, you know, simply said, I think it proves itself right there that any tax abatement program is valuable to the city where it's within. And just jumping ahead a little bit here, Amy had mentioned the Trips Park development and the Keystone Opportunity Zone tax abatement that was once in place there. So the initial market value of the Trips Park development was roughly around $261,000. As a result of that Keystone Opportunity Zone tax incentive that was in place, there is now 138 different homes with a total market valuation of about $22.6 million. So right within our own backyard, we're seeing certainly that having a tax abatement program in place is certainly impactful on the city, as well as the tax base here within. Just jumping back to the first page, though, I want to take a look at the proposed scope of work here. And we talk about if we were to look at a LERTA program, how would it play out and where would we stand? The findings, number one there, has already been accomplished as we commissioned that study, and we'd be more than happy to discuss it in further detail. But then we talk about the effectiveness as well. And that's where we go back to the initial LERTA that's already in place. So to the best of my knowledge, it was signed back in 2016 into legislation. It is a three-year LERTA with a $500,000 cap max for residential, commercial neighborhood, and commercial downtown properties. Given the lack of success, and that's nobody's fault, I think, but I think it's just that the program could certainly use a restructure in some way. But I think, you know, looking at additional opportunities beyond that and seeing what our sister cities across the state of Pennsylvania have implemented, it certainly allows for conversation and to see where our city can head. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Yeah, I have a comment a little bit on our three-year tax abatement. As you said, it really hasn't moved the needle as much as we expected it to, and that's a big problem. It sort of, for lack of a better word, did not prove proof of concept, because the three year is just, is not simply enough. And there's two different pieces of legislation there. One is more of a deteriorated legislation that addresses apartment and condo conversions, and the other one is basically new construction. And what I envision is, you know, leaving one piece of legislation alone, the apartment and condo conversions or new condos that weren't sold yet, because I think that would still work its way out. But the new construction side of it, we're seeing minimal, minimal investment within the city with three years. And I think it's time for us to really take a hard look at upping our game and getting us a little further along than we are right now.
If I can, try to sort of put a wrap around this basic idea and one of the things that we really want to try to advance. I mean, let's, I think we have to be candid with ourselves and say, you know, we're up against it in certain ways, trying to promote economic development and new building and new housing construction in Scranton, based on the circumstances that you all have inherited and that we as a partner economic development entity are, you know, try to overcome. When we're dealing with either businesses from outside the area looking to come to northeastern Pennsylvania, or if we're looking at trying to help sustain or grow our existing businesses, you know, there's a recognition that there's going to be a different cost factor for being in Scranton than there is outside Scranton, or even in other areas throughout the northeastern Pennsylvania region. And so when we've talked about, when we developed this first plan, and I'm going to say that most of you were involved at some point as we did this plan a few years ago, one of the questions, or one of the issues that kept coming up was, well, you know, the city doesn't have a lot of money to spread around and provide incentives the way the state or some other municipalities might be able to do it. And our view and the way we worked through this plan was, that doesn't necessarily mean we can't do something. And that the elements that you see here that we've talked about, really the four action items that were on there, and one, by the way, we can actually dismiss at this point, that's the idea of establishing a CRIS, Community Reinvestment Zone, because that's a statewide program, and Governor Wolf has demonstrated in his three-plus years that he's not a fan. And so I don't think there's any real chance of having a CRIS established in Scranton. So that leaves the other, the other three components. One is, as you've said, Wayne, has to do with, you know, license inspection and streamlining that process, and that's something that can be done without cost. That's an opportunity for the city to, you know, open a door, and I like to say, hang out that sign that says, "Hey, we're anxious for your business to come to Scranton, and we're going to do what we can to help you. We're going to be that ombudsman," rather than somebody standing to look for regulations and, doesn't mean we're, nobody's suggesting that you don't do what's absolutely right and necessary for the safety and security of both the people of the city and the businesses themselves. But real opportunities to say, "We can work as your partner," and I think that that's important. I'm glad to hear some of the things that you're all working on at the administration as well. The element of the LIZ, a local investment zone, is sort of, let's call it our own iteration of a CRIS. And I think that really sort of speaks to the idea of, let's just try to work together with all the potential partners. So what comes to mind when we're talking about the central business district is, of course, the city with both the mayor and council and the administrative support teams, but also Scranton Tomorrow, Chamber of Commerce, Lackawanna County, you name it, all the different partners, and as I said, some 30 partners that signed off on this revitalization plan. I think the LIZ concept works nicely with that broad idea of everybody coming together. On the incentive side, again, this speaks to the idea of what can be done when we don't have a lot of money, or maybe be challenged to try to bring some additional dollars to the table. So the creative thought here being, if we're challenged in trying to promote this development, and we can bring together Keystone Innovation Zone dollars that are particularly, you know, identified as resources here in the traditional downtown, and Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, so that would be Jefferson to the river?
Includes Mount Pleasant, River Central.
Okay, across the river, so Mount Pleasant is included, and then, what is it?
Lackawanna to Olive.
To Olive, okay. So you have a slightly smaller footprint than what we've been talking about in the expanded downtown. But those incentives are opportunities for entrepreneurs to be able to get tax credits based on the success and growth of their businesses. And there's real dollars there. That's real money in the pockets of entrepreneurs who build and develop their businesses. And we have an entrepreneurial environment in Lackawanna County these days that we've never seen before, in terms of the number of businesses that are looking to start up, many of which, of course, we're incubating at our Scranton Enterprise Center on Lackawanna Avenue, but not exclusively. I mean, there are businesses spread throughout the downtown that are benefiting from these dollars. The federal opportunity zones, I don't mean to be redundant to what Amy said, but those final regulations were actually just printed last week, I think last Friday. So we've all been anxious and waiting to see how that's going to play itself out, but we're incredibly optimistic that we think private investment is going to be focused on the six census tracts that wrap around downtown into Southside. So we know that there's something, there's a real opportunity there, but we don't know exactly how it's going to play out until we get a chance to see the regs. But then it comes down to LERTA, and you already have LERTA. You've already demonstrated, and with the support of the school district and the county, that there is a willingness and a desire to try to use that as a tool. So the suggestion here is we look at some of these very successful examples, and frankly, the ones that Amy referenced that were in the Institute for Public Policy report across Pennsylvania, and they're listed there on the front page of your document. So you have Erie, Lancaster, or I think Johnstown is on there. And they all have, in Bethlehem, for example, they have a particular approach to it, which is a graduated approach. So it's 10 years, but it's graduated each year. The Philadelphia model is very different, and that's 10-year, 100% on both commercial and residential. And as we're sitting here, and as we've been working this through with talking to other people, including the mayor's office, our feeling strongly is that we should give, ask you to give, do consideration to the broadest possible interpretation of that, i.e. the Philadelphia model. And as you all know, there's no loss of tax dollars, at least existing tax dollars on that. Existing tax dollars will be paid, it's all on improvements. And the, you know, Trips Park example is so clear that when people are given an incentive, and that's on the residential side exclusively, that the incredible number of houses, 138 houses, you know, a growth rate, as Bruce pointed out, of an order of magnitude that's just staggering in terms of what the valuation of those properties are. And all this, by the way, as it pointed out in this document, comes with a situation where the city of Scranton, since the recession, has seen a loss on its base valuation, and I don't mean to speak your language, Wayne, you understand it better than most, of, you know, 13%. Well, what does that mean to the general public? That means that the tax base has been reduced. That value is not the same. So we've got to do something to counter that, and we have to do something really bold. And what we've talked about doing, and what we've shared with you before, and we wanted to talk about in detail here tonight, is taking that approach. Think about advancing a LERTA concept that's 10 years, 100% on residential and commercial properties. And how would the partnership work? Well, we're here as the economic development partner that tells you and says to you, "We will work with the city of Scranton at every level that you'd want us to, including promoting the heck out of this." Amy, who runs the Scranton Plan, which is our marketing division, salivates at the idea that we could have materials that we're taking out throughout the Eastern Seaboard, talking about the city of Scranton, is offering something that you will not find at any of the other, with the exception of Philadelphia, you won't find it at any of those other cities. We want to be distinct. We want to catch their attention. If we get their attention and get them here, and then we're successful with all of those other elements, including the streamlined license and permitting and inspection processes, showing that kind of, I'm going to say, a friendly, you know, demeanor on behalf of the city, once we get them here, we think we can sell them. But we need something big to sell them on. And we think that that, that this bold idea on LERTA is one way to go.
I think you hit the nail on the head with the point you made earlier, and actually some of our legislation tonight unrelated kind of makes that point really resonate. As you said, we don't have a ton of money to spend around as far as incentive goes, and we're going through that process. Actually, tonight, our final approval for many of our, doing out many of our federal block grant funds that come in. And of course, there's always many more people that would like to see those funds than we have. What I really like about your proposal, the 10-year LERTA, moving it from three to 10, is it is a way for us to help the business community and residents as well. Because one of the biggest things that people, especially in the business community, will come to me and ask, they'll say, "Mr. Rogan, could we get grants?" Every day, somebody asks me if we could get grants. And generally, the answer is, there's, you know, there's a process, and it's very tedious for businesses to get grants, and they're not available for everyone. What I like most about this proposal is, it's not, "You get it, you don't get it." It's for everyone.
That's right.
Where if you want to build new construction in the city, whether it's a warehouse, whether it's, you know, a gas station, whether it's a single-family home, it applies the same to everyone. The Trips Park example, I've lived in West Side my whole life, that's, you know, really, that development would not be there if it wasn't for incentive. There's no question at all about that. This is a little bit different than the K Oz plan, but it's the same concept. And just, again, so the residents understand, it only applies on improvements. So if you have vacant land that has no improvement on it, currently the city is generating zero tax dollars on those improvements. So by extending that benefit over 10 years, we're not losing anything. We're gaining building permits. We're gaining, if it's residential, wage tax. We're gaining business privilege, market tile, hopefully those will be gone, and it'll be a payroll tax. But we're gaining the revenue on that aspect as well. So there's certainly a lot of benefit into doing something like this. And I do agree with the assessment that the three-year, although we thought it was going to move the needle, it really hasn't. There have been a few people who have taken advantage of that plan. Would they have built the homes anyways? Probably. Like I said, they're not beating down the door to build these homes. The other thing I really like about this, and like I said, is the aspect of fairness, because there are a few other developers that have, I know, contacted me and I'm sure my colleagues about LERTA project-specific. We did give a LERTA to Lace Works, the Lace Works Village, and without that LERTA, that project would not be happening. I could say that with 100% certainty. That's a great project going on, it's revitalizing what was an eyesore for decades, and the developers down there are doing a great job, there's construction going on as we speak. But to that point, even though this tool was used in that one example, it was only for them. It wasn't available for somebody down the street to do the exact same thing. So I like the idea of citywide, commercial and residential, so if people want to build homes, it would apply to them as well. If businesses want to come in and open a manufacturing plant and employ 500 people, we would welcome them with open arms, of course. So there's, there's a lot of positive that I see here. And also, it was brought up regarding the tax incentive zones through the Trump tax cuts. Although they're great, they're only for part of the city.
That's right.
And we're also competing with Blakely, and I believe is it Jessup that's also in that zone as well. So we do have that advantage from that tax law, which is great in part of the city, but we're still, it's not giving us that leg up against Blakely, against Jessup, where something like this would give us that leg up. And I've studied what happened in Philadelphia, and the numbers are, and I know you have them broken out here, the numbers are very dramatic. So this is something I would support wholeheartedly. And it's nice to be sitting here having a conversation on what can we do to progress the city, move the city forward, where unfortunately, most of the time I've been on council, we've been having a conversation here, what are we going to do to fix X, Y, and Z? So it is, like I said, very good to hear this type of proposal coming in, something that we can be proactive and look to grow our tax base, because that's the only way we're going to consistently grow, is by having new buildings built, getting people moving into the city, new construction. And when the LERTA expires, those buildings are still going to be there, and they're going to be generating revenue to the city, the county, and the school district for hundreds of years to come.
One of the things that's astounding to me is the, in the Philadelphia model, is that new home construction, because of the abatement, is increased by 367%. Now, obviously, we're not Philly, and we have different issues, but clearly, if we can increase it by 25, or 50, or 100%, that's a win. And at the end of the day, when they come back off the tax rolls, just like the Trips Park example, the tax dollars start flooding in. And we have to be looking at, what is the city going to look like 10 years from now? We never do that. And when properties start coming off the abatement, if we are able to do this, then we're going to have that influx of money when we least expect it. And it wouldn't have happened otherwise. So I would only say that we want our partners up the street to be involved, because we respect what they do, as well as the county officials. So if you can take this on the road up the street, if you can, or meet with the county officials, however you want to handle that, because we certainly want them to be partners with us in this initiative, if we decide to move forward.
Yeah, I think it'd be critical, Wayne, that it be a partnership, that it be you all, the administration, working with us. It's not a chamber idea for the city, it needs to be, you know, your idea. It is, you know, conceptually it is, because it was identified in this plan, so there was input from council and from the mayor even several years ago. I think the one thing that, you said something before about, we're not sure, you know, how will it work, what kinds of numbers will it do, maybe we won't achieve Philadelphia's, you know, extreme percentages. But remember, we're dealing with a different baseline as well, so I'm optimistic and saying, I think that if the Trips Park example is anything, then this could have maybe not the same extreme impact, because remember, the good and the bad of that was, in that case, you know, it did offer much more of a, of an opportunity, and let's say, less of a positive impact on taxes overall because of its broad swath, whereas LERTA is not. As Councilman Rogan had pointed out, you know, this is only on the improvements. But we might not know for sure what's going to happen if we do something this bold, but we sure do know what's going to happen if we don't do anything. We know what it looks like if we don't do anything. We'll be here 10 years from now in worse shape than we are now. It's, it takes political courage, it takes some, you know, truly guts to do something as interesting and exciting as this. And I just know from your collective efforts as a council that you've been taking that type of an outlook. And, you know, we want to do this because we want to benefit the community. You know, so much of this is going to benefit straight out, we think, the residential side, if the Philly example is that, much more so on the residential than on the commercial side. So in some ways, you wonder, what is the Chamber of Commerce doing this for? Well, everything that strengthens the tax base of Scranton in the long run is a plus. Everything that is, you know, enticing for businesses or individuals to come to Scranton is a plus. And when they think about coming to Scranton or growing their business in Scranton, you know, if you're based here, that at least a good percentage of the people working there are going to live in Scranton. We want to give them that good solid reason to do that. And so all of these things together, I think, are going to be something special.
Yeah, I just want to, I'll throw my two cents. I remember in 2016, we kind of crafted that three-year LERTA, and we knew we needed to do something. We knew we didn't have, I think as Councilman Rogan said, money to give out for grants, but something that we could do is give abatements, give some people time to get into our city, incubate, grow, and get on their feet. That's something that we figured we could do where maybe some other communities couldn't do. And I, as I recall, that three-year wasn't, that wasn't a hard three-year, we wanted to give that a try, put something out there, see if that was enough to give us a shot in the arm to get our community growing. You know, the data's in on that, and, you know, really, as you guys sit here before, as we sit here, you know, we need a bigger shot in the arm. As we, in the last couple of years, have been fortunate to straighten out a lot of our financial situation within the city, you know, it seems like now we turn our focus onto our neighborhoods. And what can we do to rebuild our neighborhoods? What can we do to improve all our blocks on the neighborhood and our communities? And I think this would go hand-in-hand with executing that plan, giving some people a reason to come in and build up those neighborhoods, and maybe take a chance and invest in the city where normally they wouldn't have, but now they'll buy that parcel land where there was a house that we did knock down, and now they're going to go there and maybe rebuild and build up that neighborhood again. So yeah, I can see this fitting in well with the plan that I think we have to get back into our neighborhoods and build those back up again. As you say, this is also for commercial, but we, you know, we know when a property's built, when a property is lived in, it's a home, it's no longer just a structure, and once you're part of that community, you know, that, you're not going anywhere. You know, we said Trips Park many times today. You know, that's a, that's a community on and to its own up there right now, and that's not going anywhere. They'll be here, you know, in the city as long as City Hall is. So yeah, this is, this is a great program, and I can't wait to talk about this more in the next couple of weeks and get it to where we need to go.
Two quick questions. You mentioned that you met with the mayor and the administration. Do you know, are they on board with the 10-year LERTA with the Philadelphia model? Have they given their support to that?
The mayor told me to, you know, to indicate that he's in favor of a LERTA activity. I think they're still at the point where they're asking the solicitor to take a look at some of this stuff. So I don't mean to try to speak for the mayor specifically, but there's no question that the meeting we had with the mayor and his cabinet was 100% support for, for taking a bold step. I think, I think the implication is that it really needs to be all of you. You know what I mean? This, to the degree that you all can come on board, I think it, again, that's another thing. Let me just say this as sort of a, from a citizen's standpoint. The idea that council and the mayor work together as well as you all do right now, and that for the last, you know, in the last four years, you've done an amazing job. You've really buttoned up some of the important issues for this city. And so now, on the precipice of being able to move forward in a proactive way with, I'm going to assume, the full support of the administration as well, I think it's, I think it's telling people throughout Scranton and northeastern Pennsylvania what a great perspective you have, what a positive outlook you have. Because, boy, we could sit here, honestly, and start going over a whole host of other things that are going on. We all know about so many of the projects downtown, but you know, Neighbor Works is doing wonderful- doing wonderful work in West Side. You know, we've got other entities, you know, the Lace Works. There's a lot of momentum here, and it's starting to build.
What's the, I don't know if you'd know this offhand, but you know what the retention rate is, like the LURDA program in Philadelphia and other areas? So they have 10 years, and then do they stay after that? Has anybody looked at those figures? Because I mean, with Tripp's Park, it was a great project, but I know that, you know, once the tax abatement was up, people were trying to get out because the taxes were too high. So I think to play devil's advocate, that could be one, might be one issue, or do you see that as an issue?
I'll be honest with you, Bill, I don't think it would be, because it's going to be a different scale, because it's on improvement. And, you know, I don't know that our study, that our efforts really drilled into that whole piece, but let's just say this, that even if someone does leave, they're leaving behind an improved property. You know, that's a plus. But I, you know, I think because it's of a different percentage. And, you know, in a 10-year timeframe, for those of us who are glass half-full, I think Scranton's going to be the place to be. I think it's the place to be now. And I think we have to do some things to tell people about that and to shake this up a bit.
Thank you.
Just in wrapping up, we'd like to thank you again for coming in. We have been focusing more on economic development with, I know you've come in a couple of times this year already. We had Scranton Tomorrowing just two weeks ago. So this is something that we're going to continue to focus on, now that we have finally been able to get past many of those mistakes over the past decades and getting our budgets in line, so we can finally be proactive. So we'd like to thank you for coming in, and I do echo the comments that Councilman Evans made regarding getting the school district and the county involved as well. I know when we passed the initial legislation, it was everyone on board 100%. Like I said, I'm on board 100%. I hope we have the same type of reception when this is rolled out, if council and the administration decide to go down that path.
Great. Well, it continues to be a pleasure to work with all of you, so thanks.
Thank you very much.
Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as it is all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and for all those who have passed away in our community. We wish to acknowledge the untimely passing of State Representative Sid Michaels' cavillage, and it is with heavy hearts that we pray for Attorney Salvador Nardozzi, who passed away this weekend. Sal was the husband of our sonographer, Kathleen Nardozzi. We pray for the family during this most difficult time.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Gahn.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here.
I would like to make a motion to take from the table file of the Council number 27, 2018.
Second. On the question, this piece is being taken from the table and being placed into seventh order for a final vote. It is the 2019 OECD action plan that was tabled in order to comply with the 30-day public comment period as required by HUD. Anyone who wishes to speak on this particular piece of legislation may do so during fourth order citizens' participation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
I make a motion to appoint Councilman Gahn as temporary chairperson for the Committee on Community Development.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so order. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A check received from Lutherwood in the amount of $6,000 for payment in lieu of taxes.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B controllers' report for month ending September 30, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C tax assessors' results report for hearing date held October 10, 2018.
Are there any comments? Received and filed.
3D minutes of the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held September 19, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3E minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission meeting held September 19, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3F minutes of the composite pension board meeting held September 19, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3G agenda for the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held October 17, 2018.
Any comments? Received and filed.
3H agenda for the City Planning Commission meeting to be held October 24, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Yes, I have one announcement to make. The Scranton Police Department is teaming up with the Fire Department this year in an effort to raise enough money to purchase 1,200 coats for the needy children in the Scranton School District. A fundraiser is being planned at the Hilton on First Friday, November 2nd. And some information about it, it runs from 5:00 to 9:00 at night. The cost is $20 at the door, which each entry fee will go towards one of the coats. For tickets in advance, you can call 570-348-4139. There'll be a cash bar. Special prizes will be drawn all evening, and there'll also be a 50/50. So First Friday's a great activity anyway. Please stop by and help the Police and Fire Department buy some coats for the needy kids this winter. Thank you.
I would just like to announce again that recycled leaf bags are still available at all fire stations throughout the city. A future announcement will be made when the DPW date for pickup for a citywide leaf will be made.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Michelle Dempsey. She's here to speak on item 7D, so we will give her a little bit of extra time if needed. And we apologize for not being able to get you into our caucus. It did run a little bit late with the Chamber of Commerce.
So I have some visuals for the better use this way?
If you left it out there, that way the camera could pick it up as well.
Here?
Yeah.
Sorry.
You need to, you need a hand?
I think I'll go through this, I might need a hand. So I'm here because I understand that there is, it would be helpful to have some clarification around what the grant is for, and that maybe there was a little confusion. So the grant in front of you is part of a larger impact project called the Iron District. And the Iron District is intended to be an artistic and cultural link between downtown Scranton and south Scranton, along the Cedar Avenue corridor, where actually UNC has already done a lot of great work in fixing up those streetscapes. And there's more work to be done. So the Iron District was imagined as a destination, where eventually the iron furnaces would be the sort of heart of that destination in that part of the city, and we would give it a name, the Iron District, because it's, actually, the iron furnaces are the reason that Scranton exists. Right? And there, the iron was forged that actually took the coal across the country and helped fuel the Industrial Revolution. So the grant was for, there were two phases. There were two multimodal grants that came up this year, and neither of them had a match, which we thought was something we wouldn't want to lose out on, something like that. So the first one was for Phase 1. The first multimodal grant was for what we call Phase 1, which roughly covered about half of the district. So the district goes from Bogart Court, from Lackawanna Avenue near Bogart Court, the 500 block of Lackawanna, all the way down to where Cedar Avenue jogs. And so the first phase was to be the first part of that corridor, and the second phase was the second part. The first grant, we did not receive. These are very competitive grants. What's in front of you is for Phase 2, which might pick up some parts of Phase 1. We needed to at least, we thought if we did get the first grant, and we weren't able to get everything in Phase 1, if we could pick it up in Phase 2, that'd be great, because you have to tell the area that you're going to, the areas that are going to be affected, or you're not allowed to use the grant money for them. So this opens up the possibility of doing some work in Phase 1, if we get this grant. So what that grant is particularly focusing on are the streetscapes, because right now, the walk from downtown, if you've ever walked from downtown into down Cedar Avenue to south Scranton, it's a bit, it's not very inviting, right? You have to walk by General Dynamics, or the big power lines, it seems a little dangerous. There are no trees, it's all hardscape. It's not very inviting. So we imagined, first and foremost, when you come, this is Bogart Court here, this is the train trestle, this is that new elevator park, Renaissance Park. We imagined branding at the Iron District as you come into that park, as you come through that threshold, that entry into the Iron District. You see, we have a screen here to start to cover up some of the stuff going on at General Dynamics, which would be good for them too, some privacy, but also some visual screening. And then as you go along, as you go along the district, the iron furnaces would be transformed into a really wonderful, they just had the bonfire at the iron furnaces, so they're already having great events there. And we imagined that over time, maybe even a visitor's center or something of that nature would be attached to it, so you could have events all year long at that location. And I'm really abbreviating a very long, long list of ideas for the iron furnaces themselves. And then as you go along, there's like reclaiming the Roaring Brook and making it a place that maybe you could have kayak races, or, you know, some kind of recreational boating and water activity, and then going down deeper into the Cedar Avenue corridor, again, just trees, signage, lighting, safer sidewalks, more green, and maybe some facade uplifting to continue that revitalization of that corridor, which is already having a kind of catalytic effect. And then down at the end, at the end where it jogs, it's a big, open, empty lot. And at this moment, we're just in dream world and envisioning, so we envisioned maybe it was a skate park with a ban shelf, and that could be a lot of fun. So just to show you a little bit bigger here. That was sort of a snapshot. But this is the idea, for example, walking along, this is General Dynamics, the furnaces are on this side, we're looking back at downtown, and you can see with all this power lines and big, heavy kind of electrical equipment, and the sidewalk is in a state of disrepair, and the street itself, you know, doesn't look very inviting. We imagine adding some softscape with a rhythm of trees, having a screening fence that just visually covers some of those elements, perhaps adding a bike lane, branding, now you're going back into downtown, again, adding some green on this side, and with some simple moves, it really transforms that into a very welcoming and inviting streetscape to walk along. And that's, these are the things that we hope to accomplish in the grants that we put forward. And then as you go deeper into the streetscapes, just flip one more page here. Here we are, a little bit further down the road on the Cedar Avenue corridor and how it exists today, and then again, imagining some improved sidewalks, some trees, lights, banners, little color, little facelift on the buildings, and it really transforms that corridor. So we're imagining from Lackawanna all the way down to the jogging Cedar, creating this new vibrant neighborhood. And again, sorry, hate to keep turning my back to you, but this is sort of the imagination here. And just because I know I did not face this towards you. Here are some of those before and afters, the iron district today, or the furnaces today, and after the recreation along Roaring Brook and the ban shelf, and creating the Iron District entry portal. Also, in the bigger picture of this plan, which I'm abbreviating now, we imagine tying into the Lackawanna Heritage River Trail, which could connect all the way up to the University of Scranton, along the Roaring Brook, through the Iron District, and to the University's fields, and then over to the trail, and hopefully eventually to Steamtown. So it really is, in big picture, pretty exciting, if we get bike trails and walkability, vibrant neighborhoods, a new district connected right to our downtown, keep the momentum going, improve our streets, make them more safe, and generally, it's a big uplift. So one thing that's very important in these grants is, you know, having the city, having the municipality behind, standing behind it, especially because they're so competitive, and given that there's no match, I don't think this is something we'd want to miss out on. So I hope that explains a little bit more of what we're up to.
Thanks, Michelle. It's nice to know the Iron District is still alive and well. I know I worked on it with you way back in the very beginning stages, and it's as impressive as ever, so we're hopeful that it continues to move forward.
Thank you, Wayne.
And thank you for the additional information. We will be taking a final vote tonight, and hopefully it'll be unanimous in favor.
Yeah, I mean, it really brings it off the page. When you're going through 12 pages, it's just legislation with numbers on it. That brings it to life. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Should I leave these here, or would you want me to take this with me? You're welcome to, if you want to peruse it during the...
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Joan Hodewan.
Joan Hodewan, a Scranton resident and taxpayer. And what is the status of the audit this week?
There was no...
Don't you lie to me?
No, I'm not going to lie to you. There was no PEO meetings, I wasn't, I didn't get an update on it, but I thought it was done, to be perfectly honest with you. I thought it was completed, so I'll find out for you, and we'll get back to you as soon as we can.
Okay, well, it's 144 days late, but that's okay. Item 5D on tonight's agenda, the grant for the Scranton Cultural Center to do repairs to two elevators which date back to the 1930s. I don't have any problem with that request, but I did see that there were two different figures. There is an OECD in the backup, which states the grant's for $356,376.51. And yet, in the agenda, it's $345,405. I assume that what you've got in the agenda is the correct current figure, and something happened since September 26th to change that number? So...
We did notice that, and we are going to ask OECD before final passage.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's only $971.51, but money's money. Item 5E, the grant for 614 Wyoming Avenue, which apparently justifies itself by saying, create two floors of office space in a six-story building, and provide much-needed parking in that section of Scranton. It's going to transform an old warehouse building into office space. Couple questions. If it's a six-story building, and you're going to create two floors of office space, what's happening to the other four floors?
For now, I know they're using it for storage. I'm not sure if that's going to continue or not, or they're just going to basically hold it for future development.
Okay. And the parking space, supposedly it's going to create 104 parking spaces. Now, is this going to be like a parking lot for the offices, or a parking lot for general parking? Is it going to be, is there revenue coming in from this parking, or is this free, come as you are, park, first come, first served? Is it metered? What is it going to be?
Well, it certainly won't be metered, but I'm assuming it's going to be parked, just for the project itself.
So they'll be charged, they'll be charged for...
Or it'll just be for the building, for the tenants of the building.
Okay.
Because those floors are pretty large.
Yeah, because they're going to demolish a building. And so if the offices are charging for parking, that revenue goes to the offices, correct? Not to the city?
That's correct.
And, you know...
From looking through, it doesn't look like there's going to be a parking for, basically, it doesn't look like they're going to run a parking lot as a business operation. I think it's going to be parking for the tenants within the building.
And their customers.
And their customers.
Okay.
And I know the owner pretty well, he has a lot of other developments in the city that have done just well. He doesn't charge for, you know, he doesn't operate any for-profit parking lots exclusively.
Okay, but it doesn't alleviate the parking problem for the general downtown? It's specific to that building, then?
Right.
Okay. During the caucus, you were talking about the status of pension reforms. If you would discuss that during fifth order? And also, I would like you to discuss the status of a public meeting for the stormwater problems that were mentioned last week, specifically the 2,600 block... problems that were mentioned last week, specifically the 2,600 block of Pittston Avenue, Kaiser Valley, El Young on Wyoming Avenue, and general places within the city, uh, that have stormwater problems and are seeking information. I'd like to know the status of a public meeting on those issues. And, uh, finally, Pat, did you get your, your munchkin, the library card yet?
Not yet, but it is on our to-do list.
Okay, and, uh, Bill, you can take your two sons on November 18th at the Children's Library at 2:00 PM, Close Encounters with Live Birds of Prey. And they have a great time, the kids, with this. You do need to call, it's not, it's a free event, but they need to know how many children are coming, so you need to call to register at 570-348-3000, extension 3015. And please call the Children's Libraries, let them know you're coming with your child. And I'll leave you these posters.
Our next speaker is Sam, and I apologize, I can only see part of your last name.
Ganz.
Gant?
Yes, Sam Ganz, G-A-N-Z. So, I had two things, uh, for your consideration. The first one is something I brought up a couple of years ago. My children go to a private school on Monroe, between Vine and, I think it's Olive. Uh, it's a one-way street. Uh, the University of Scranton students come in every year, and they're new, and they don't know the one ways, and it is very confusing here. Without fail, virtually every day, there's three, four, five cars going down the one-way street the wrong way, uh, which is obviously dangerous no matter what, with a bunch of little kids, all the more so. Um, a couple of years ago, I brought it up, in the hopes of finding out if we can put more than just the one, there's one sign on, on one of the corners, uh, that says something like, "Do not enter." If there's any way to put more signage, or something to make it a little more obvious for all the new drivers in town that it's a one-way street.
I'm not, I'm not sure why, I'm, I'm over here, if you're not used to it, it's kinda confusing.
Sorry.
Um, I'm really not sure why all those streets are one-way streets anyway. Monroe, Clay, I, I never understood the purpose of that unless the hospitals had something to do with it, but I think that's something I'd, we'd like to look at overall, you know, why the one-way streets still exist, because in neighborhoods especially, it's moving the cars far too quickly when it's a one-way street.
Yes.
Uh, so I think we need to look at the concept entirely.
I would love it. I live on a one-way street, and it's really annoying, I have to go around to get to my house, so by all means, undo move. But, uh, but either if we could undo it, or put up just something there, uh, because it is definitely a safety issue. The second thing for your consideration is, uh, by my synagogue, I understand several years ago, I don't remember exactly when, someone petitioned to put up a two-hour no parking sign because of the university students parking in front of them, taking all the spots. Um, and what happened was, over one of the Jewish holidays recently, uh, where Orthodox Jews cannot drive, it fell out on weekdays, and a number of us parked there before the holiday, uh, and consequently, our cars remained there, and we all got tickets during, uh, the two days of the holiday, because we couldn't move the cars. Uh, I spoke with the police department, they said, "I have to speak with you about different options," and the thought that I had was, I, I am a native Scrantonian, but I did live in New York for a long time. In New York, the way they do it, uh, granted, there, there are many more Jewish people there, but the way they do is they just kind of put in for the, there are not that many days where we cannot drive, and what they would do is just suspend the, the meter parking or the two-hour, whatever, parking, uh, to allow for us to be able to drive to the temple right before the holiday starts, park the car there, and not have to worry about getting a ticket before we can move it again. I, I paid my tickets, I'm not worried about the money.
We could certainly ask the chief about that, and, um, I was hoping you didn't pay it already. I was gonna say, in that type of situation, I'm sure, and again, it does take time, to, if, if you went to the magistrate, they certainly can't violate your religious freedoms, um, you know, in that type of situation, but, um, so anyone else, certainly encourage them to, if they had tickets, to, to go to the magistrate's office to have them dismiss them, but it is something we could relay to our police chief, um, in that specific location. Um, we would need a little bit of help, though, on educating us on what holidays, um, you know, so we could be a little bit better informed as well.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and of course, I'm more than happy to help with whatever can to make that work.
Mr. Ganz, before you go, uh, on Monroe Avenue, it was Olive Street, and what was the other?
Uh, I, I'm trying to remember the names of the streets, because I grew up here, uh, but it's definitely between Vine and whatever proceeds by, not Mulberry.
Do you have an address?
Be Vine and Olive, yeah.
Vine and Olive?
Uh, it's five something.
Okay.
Five hundred block.
Yeah, that's, that's Vine and Olive.
Right, I grew up right there, and I still am.
Okay. Uh, Mrs. Reed, maybe we can have a, a letter sent to Chief Graziano, and maybe send Officer Mitchell over to see if, if there's anything that we can do as far as extra signage, uh, for that intersection, for that street right there, and then maybe DPW can get something put up quicker than not.
And, and on the off chance this is a financial issue, I'm more than happy to pay whatever the cost is.
Well, we should, I mean, that, if, if it's a, a simple issue of public safety, that should, you know, that's on the city's dime, so we'll be happy to take a look at it, and hopefully get this fixed for you.
Since we're sending the letter, if we could also include, um, for certain holidays, um, in the, the parking area as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Council. Gerard Hetman from Lackawanna County Commissioner's Office. I'm pleased to announce that the proposed 2019 Lackawanna County budget was released to the public by the Commissioners on October 15th. First, the budget contains no increase in the millage rate, uh, tax rate stays the same at 5.742 mils. Uh, we do have copies of the budget message for you. With the caucus before the meeting, I didn't get a chance to come up to the dais and distribute that, uh, but we do have the central budget message, which is prepared by our office every year, and in addition, Commissioner Oteriani and Commissioner Cummings have both released their own budget messages that highlight some of their priorities and areas they like to put an emphasis on going into this budget cycle. Highlights of the proposed budget include upgrades to Land Records management software, improvements to roads and bridges, new equipment for facilities around the county, and the purchase of a building to serve as a central court center. The budget also contains provisions for our parks, human service programming, aging initiatives, environmental initiatives, and spraying for gypsy moths and black flies, along with monitoring for Zika and other viruses. We continue to meet the challenge of an ever-changing society by doing more with less in a fiscally responsible fashion. The entire proposed budget is available for review in PDF format online at www.lackawannacounty.org. We welcome questions and input from the public on the budget process. On that note, a series of four public budget hearings will be held regarding the proposed 2019 Lackawanna County budget. All of the hearings will take place on Thursday, November 1st, at the following times and locations. 10:00 AM in the Commissioner's Conference Room on the County Administration Building, sixth floor of 200 Adams Avenue in Scranton, noon at the Madison Township Municipal Building, 3200 Madisonville Road in Madison Township, 3:00 PM at the Moffett Estate, also known as the Covington Township Municipal Building, 20 Moffett Drive in Covington Township, and 5:00 PM at the Clark Screen Borough Building, 104 North Abington Road in Clark Screen. Uh, once again, the budget, of course, as presented, is tentative, uh, it is subject to change before the Commissioners do the two required readings of the budget, uh, as outlined in the county's Home Rule Charter. Uh, but the budget is presented, again, as proposed, uh, open for comments, questions, uh, anyone is welcome to attend the budget hearings, or certainly contact our office if they have any questions or suggestions on how we can improve the budget going forward. Uh, second, the 2018 Festival of Trees is now open for registration. Businesses, nonprofit agencies, and community groups can decorate a tree in this annual exhibit. It runs from December 15th to January 13th at the marketplace at Steamtown. Visit www.lackawannacounty.org for registration information. All proceeds benefit Toys for Tots in our region. Third, we're pleased to announce a new initiative with programming between the Lackawanna County Area Agency on Aging and the Greenhouse Project at Naug Park. Uh, this is a really neat initiative. We're gonna see a number of different programs, some of them are gonna be one-off things like workshops and special events, other ones will be rolling activities that take place on a weekly or a monthly basis. Uh, the two that are coming up now are, the first one is kind of a coffee hour, it's honey, bees, teas, and baklava. It's Sunday, October 28th at 2:00 PM. The second one is a hands-on floral design class, uh, Sunday, November 18th, 1:00 PM, and both of those take place at the greenhouse in Naug Park. They're both free for seniors 65 years of age or older, uh, there's a nominal fee to participate for anyone under that age. Any questions, or to register in advance for those, contact 570-963-6740, or email And last but not least, Penn State Extension in Lackawanna County is doing a program they call Put Your Garden to Bed, uh, designed to teach home growers how to rehabilitate their garden over the winter months, so it's productive in the next growing season. It takes place at 10:00 AM on Saturday, October 27th, at the University of Scranton Community Garden, 300 North Irving Avenue in Scranton. Program's free and open to the public. Any questions, please call 570-963-6842. That's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Maurice Schumacher. Uh, first off the bat, when is our stormwater meeting going to occur, the, with the mayor here and the public hearing?
We didn't get a reply yet on that. I'll, I'll explain in fifth order, I don't want to take your time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Ganz, since, uh, since you're speaking anyway, last week, uh, you asked that all boards, commissions, and authorities, uh, submit their minutes to be put in third order, which I think is a great idea. I would like to ask, however, that you add one more, and that is to these, uh, Scranton Tomorrow. We've given a boatload of money to those people, um, we have no idea what they're doing, except I did see in the le, in, uh, legal notices, the advertisement for the flowerpots and things of that nature, but, and I remember a couple of months back, uh, well, initially, they hired an executive director, and there were two more positions, but, uh, I think they should be public meetings, they're here in town, you have really subcontracted to them, and they hold regular meetings, and I think we should be entitled to look at the minutes and see what's happening. There's, you know, here we're, our tin cup is out to put more money in, uh, again, so...
I can certainly make that request.
Uh, okay. Uh, what, uh, Mr. Evans, what is the status of the comprehensive plan and the new ordinance that we were planned right after the, uh, right after the rental registration? We are gonna have a new one on condemnation, and here we are.
Well, I'm currently part of a BLYT task force, and we're trying to, I'm waiting for the results of that, uh, be finished, so we can incorporate that into the overall restructuring of a BLYT plan.
What's the schedule?
Uh, well, I have a meeting this Thursday, uh, to see a final draft, so it should be soon.
Okay, good, we certainly, we certainly need that. Now, um, you know, I, Ms. Dempsey's, uh, presentation, we've seen it on a regular basis, uh, but I have a couple of questions on it. I mean, yeah, it's nice if you've got a boatload of money, uh, but she envisions beauty down in Southside, which we had and destroyed, uh, but what I envision are, in my neighborhood on the East Mountain, sidewalks, period. I mean, for five years, I, I was behind a wheelchair, pushing my mother around, and you had to go into the street. So, that's what I envision, um, I have to take care of my own. I also envision, uh, a stormwater solution. I envision going down the street and actually seeing a number on a home, and I, and when I get to a street, I would like to see that street sign. Comes, grants come from that same, that same item. I think it would be more beneficial to more citizens if we went after not things that are nice to have, but what we really need, and benefit more people in this community. Uh, the, the street signs are terrible, we should be, we should be putting our, our money there, and, uh, and I mean, I'm not totally against it, but, but the other thing, and it's a technicality, because you've got it back here, now it's been changed, nobody's made a motion to change the, um, the verbiage, now they've changed whatever was that, that other grant, now it is the, uh, Commonwealth Financing Authority. And that Commonwealth, and that, again, is more confusing, because that Commonwealth Financing Authority was established as an independent agency to handle, to administer Pennsylvania's economic stimulus and growth and the programs. There is no program that I'm aware of, or on their website, for this group, they are a pass-through. So, number one, how does an ordinance get changed, or a resolution get changed from one week to the next without a vote? And second, is that, uh, is that a legitimate, is that a legitimate funding authority in and of itself? I think there should be a program.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Lenny Cerebro, Scranton resident. Um, Joan, when you stated you'd like to see a status of a, a public meeting for the flooding problem, or the water management problem, and you included Kaiser Valley, boy, would I ever love to be able to tell you that, because tonight was supposed to be another public meeting for the Kaiser Valley flooding problem. I don't know who could have planned, that meeting was supposed to start at 7:00 tonight, and here, the council meeting is at 6:00.
I believe Gary DeBilio was the president of the Neighborhood Association, so that would have been who, who called the meeting.
So, he called the meeting?
I would assume, he, he's the president of the organization, so I would assume it was him that called the meeting.
Okay. All I know is the results of that now. This is the third meeting that was canceled in two years' time. Uh, that, that, the power people, some of you council people, and the engineer, and, and, uh, whatever, whoever was gonna come out, uh, at three different meetings that I can remember in two years, and they were canceled at the last minute. You know, it seems like they set it up that way or something, so they can purposely cancel it. In the meantime, all the neighbors are ready to go to this meeting and speak their piece, and you know, then at the last minute, it's canceled. I learned this just this afternoon, that that meeting was canceled. Now, all the neighbors are ready to go at this, you know, and, and be able to talk about it, and here we go again. Now, what is it gonna take, another year to set up another meeting again? And, and once again, I hope that people give up, which they, they do, because everybody's putting away a, a, a side time for this meeting that comes once a year, or very seldom, and then, you know, nothing happens. And, and people give up, you know? People have lives, you know, to, uh, to take time and, and do this thing. So, I'm wondering, when's the next meeting gonna be? A year from now, or will somebody set it up right away? Um, okay, uh, that's what I'd like to know, when the next meeting is gonna be now? I can't wait to find out. Um, I also agree with Maurice Schumacher. Um, boy, that iron stuff, boy, that's so nice and all of that, but boy, who has the money for all of this, you know? I understand there's grants available for the flooding problem too. I don't know the details about it, but I don't understand why 20 years have gone by with the flooding problems that...
Mr. Cerebro, one issue has nothing to do with the other. We understand there's many problems throughout the city, but just because one isn't fixed doesn't mean we can't address another. So, the logic that, well, because there's this problem, this problem, and this problem, we shouldn't fix this one, just makes absolutely no sense.
No, I don't follow what you said.
What you and, and Ms. Schumacher said is, well, it's nice to do this late, this iron project, which I fully support, I think it will be a great addition to our city, but I would rather X, Y, and Z. One has nothing to do with the other. Uh, this is not general fund money. These type of grants, for instance, this is a multimodal transportation funds grant, can only be used for certain items.
Okay, that's why I'm saying, I don't understand the grant.
And, and I hope that the city will apply for any type of... And I hope that the city will apply for any type of grant we can, whether it's to fix the flooding in Kaiser Valley, which, again, I live a few blocks away. I'm right there as well, I see it as well, or to put sidewalks on East Mountain. All these things need to be fixed, but just because one project is happening and one isn't, doesn't mean we care more about one or the other. There's just different pots of funds through the state and the federal government that sometimes can only be used for certain projects.
Okay, and I'm not saying give up on that iron project, you know, but jeez, why can't we get some grants going our way for the flooding?
There's just a huge frustration level, and I understand, the frustration level's for the roof. This issue that we've had with flooding has been going on for far too long, and you, like everyone else, and myself, I'm ready for it to come to an end and get fixed once and for all. You know, Councilman Gahan will talk about it later, but we asked for a public meeting based on all flooding issues in the city and a master plan. We have yet to get a response back from that. Now, while there are pockets of issues happening right now, and we may address those issues on a first-come-first-served basis, I guess you could say, I still would like the master plan of what we're going to do, how to tackle the flooding and the stormwater issue. And my frustration level is right there with you, Mr. Cerebro. You know, I've been with you lockstep the whole time, and I just want this behind us and taken care of for all of us.
Okay, like I said, the biggest thing I'm after is to find out when that, the next public meeting would be available.
As I mentioned, that meeting was run through the neighborhood organization. That was not a city council, obviously, it couldn't have been a city council-run meeting, because we meet at the same time. So, to find out when that would be rescheduled, I would reach out to the Neighborhood Association.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Bob Bowles?
Evening, council. Bob Bowles, Scranton. Some of the issues that have been going on that I missed, but I think we need to address. Mr. Gahan, last week, I believe it was, that you said you had council send a letter to the other boards that you wanted a copy of their minutes, so that you could review them, yet we don't have minutes here to give to other boards and other people. If they want to come here and see what's going on, they got to go watch TV or get something like that. I think that's just ludicrous, that you would request somebody else to supply minutes, but yet you guys don't supply them to us or anybody else. So, I think that was way off-base to ask somebody to accommodate you, when you don't accommodate everybody else. I've listened to everybody here, I watched everybody in your comments in the past about dancing around issues. How many times have you danced around the issues on the mall, on tax in the mall, that I've raised here, that should be millions of dollars more, yet nobody does nothing, nobody touched it? I raised the parking garages, I've raised everything around here, especially what Basilica did, buying for a dollar, the parking spaces we were supposed to have at the mall, where we had the issue between you and myself over a letter that went later. Somebody keeps talking about we dance around issues. I've never seen anybody dance around issues than I see right here. You need to take an issue on, but you need to come to a conclusion with them, instead of us coming here like idiots all the time and keep asking it. I raised issues in the past, if you recall, about a mini casino for the mall. I was actually going to buy the mall if people had gotten together and sent letters to the gaming board, at least requesting a license for the mall. Nobody bothered, and I didn't waste my time with it. I'm looking at the revitalization of this city, not filling my pockets, yet the mall is filling their pockets, and we're doing not a damn thing about it, yet we're letting them make out here for millions of dollars. When I bought the church, I raised it many times, that I got assessed because of a grudge against us, because a certain judge didn't get the property next door. Told you we were assessed, but nobody bothered to go find out why we were being assessed all that money, and why I owe 50 grand on a $35,000 investment to preserve the culture in our city. I came, I went to the school board meeting. I didn't see you there. I didn't see anybody. They're talking about the issues with the school board, yet I understand, if I'm not mistaken, that your sister or relative was just hired by the school district. Now, they want to change the policy on hiring, but they didn't do nothing prior. You know, I don't want to be arrogant about it, but sometimes I listen to you here, I'd like to know who writes your script that you missed all this. I hear about streets, I hear about people calling, "Do you want this and do that?", and I haven't seen you raise an issue yet. And I was going to go to your party the other night with a trailer, but I figured I'll just wait for the future, when you do make an announcement, because people I want to see sit here, and people I want to see in this council and the administrations are people that are going to do something for the city and not just talk about it. I want to see leadership, and you lead by example. We're putting up a banner on the Holy Cross Church, and on it, it says, "Sanctuary for Criminal Illegal Aliens," courtesy of Bob Casey, Wolf, and Cartwright, since they're sponsors of sanctuary cities. We're going to let them start right here in downtown Scranton, since they should start something in their hometown, since they want to do it elsewhere, and I'm going to let them use the church. So, that's my courtesy to all the illegal criminals. Thanks to our Casey, Wolf, and Cartwright, now you have a place to stay. I think what Casey did was despicable to Lou Barletta. You don't attack the family, especially somebody dealing with cancer. There's a lot of other issues you could raise. It was way off-base, and I call him Despicable Bob at this juncture. We turn around, and we keep going around and around and around. Tomorrow, we have Eric Trump coming to Scranton. We're always in the spotlight nationally. He'll be here at one o'clock tomorrow. Everybody comes to our city, and what do we show them? Disrespect? We don't show them anything else. You know, we have to turn around and make the changes. You need to go after the mall, you need to go after the money, you need to go after the University of Scranton. You need to put a fee on them. You got to let them start paying. Let's put the politics outside the door. You want to run for future offices, you want to get things done. I remember I was called a skunk here by your mother and everything else, but my issues are my city, and I don't like what's going on, and I don't like skirting around issues. If you're going to represent us, then represent us, but conclude and answer questions. When all of us come in here with questions...
Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
We never get a bloody answer, and I like to see that. But in the future, I'll have a trailer for you anyway, and I'll put all the issues on it. Thank you.
Good. I'd like nothing more. I'd probably get more votes from that, because I don't think a lot of people in the community really respect you, to be honest with you. So, you could put two, three, four trailers, I bet you I'd get more votes just from that, because I think you think you're a celebrity in your own mind, Bob, but you're really not, okay?
I'm not trying to be anything...
And you could take your seat now, because your time is up.
I'm not running for anything, but you should remember, time was up when you make that comment to me now, when the mayor was speaking...
Listen, you're a legend in your own mind, a legend in your own mind.
When the mayor was speaking on the stage, you had no problem violating my time and bullying in there...
What is this meeting, Mr. Rogan? Is it Mr. Bowles's take on national politics, or is this a city council meeting?
Will you engage Mr. Bowles?
Well, because he stands... Would you like me to fact-check him live? Because he made a false statement about the minutes, I'll address that in fifth order. I mean, this is ridiculous, talking about Donald Trump, Bob Casey, Lou Barletta...
Wait, Gahan, this is a public forum. This is a public forum. This is a public forum.
Mr. Bowles, thank you.
And maybe you need to start learning to understand that. This isn't your forum. It belongs to one.
Mr. Bowles, thank you very much. Regarding comments on things that do not have to do with the city of Scranton, many speakers bring up issues that have nothing to do with the city of Scranton, whether it's about the president, for the president, against the president, and we let them speak. Just because you may not agree with some of the things that he mentioned, I may not agree with what other speakers mentioned, but they have the right to say it. Is there, Mr. Bowles, Mr. Bowles, your time is up.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Good evening, council. Glenis Johns, North Scranton. A couple of things, same announcements from last time, just to keep it on the city's conscience. We are putting together a complete count committee for the city of Scranton. As you all know, Mr. Evans is already kind of a part of it. I spoke with some representatives from the Census Bureau and the Philadelphia Department, and they asked if we can possibly schedule a meeting or CC in some emails, because they want to kind of see participation from the mayor. I haven't heard anything back, so if you can help me facilitate that in some way, so that way, we can kind of have the mayor on board with this whole committee, and we can start doing things. Mr. Hetman is in the room. If you want to be part of this committee, that would be great, because I know the commissioner's office isn't really doing too much, and I would like to see more participation from all of the leaders in the city. 2020 will be here before we even know it, and it benefits everybody, bipartisan, color, neighborhood, it does not matter, we all matter when it comes to the census. So, I just want to make sure that we are all putting aside political differences and making sure that we get the federal funding that we need for our city, so that way, our children especially can benefit and be successful human beings. That's why I'm passionate about the census. My second announcement, on a lighter note, for First Friday, we are having a black art exhibition. Just so the public knows, it'll be taking place at the cultural center at 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., downstairs in the Raymond Hood Room. It's going to be an amazing event. We're highlighting artists of color in the city. We have phenomenal artists. This is a portrait done by one of the artists that will be displaying at the exhibition. It's open to the public, feel free to come. There's going to be more art and live music that evening at Posh, if anyone is interested. It's a free event, so come out, meet some new people, meet some amazing artists in the city. I think it's going to be a really fun, lighthearted event here for the city of Scranton, and something different that we don't usually see. And those are my two announcements. Like I said, I really want to have a second meeting, and like I said, the Census Bureau is very supportive in making sure that we can put this committee together and figuring out ways that we can collaborate, so we, you know, we can do this properly. So, like I said, I haven't really emailed you guys much, but if that's something that we can do specifically to get the mayor on board...
Excuse me, Glenis, can we get order in the audience, Mr. Rogan? We have a speaker here, and she's being interrupted by these gentlemen.
I agree. I apologize, I didn't notice that folks in the audience were talking. The floor is yours.
Thank you. So, yeah, like I said, 2019 is like only months away, and the count is April 1st, 2020. So, the best, like, what we can do to start, like, organizing, and it's the better, the bigger the committee, the better. There'll be subcommittees. We just want to reach out to all aspects of the community, educators, community leaders, schools, the libraries on board, just really everywhere, everywhere that we can get people, because I think it's really important. We've been undercounted for the past three decades, like I mentioned a lot. In 2010, over a million children were not counted, which means there was no programs for CHIP or Head Start, and all of those really important things. So, I'm not going to stand up here much longer, because I said this last week, and I will continue to speak on it until it comes into fruition, but for those who are interested in participating for the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee, you can email CountingScranton2020@gmail.com to get involved. We're still in the planning stages, so there's not too much information just yet, but we're hoping that with the committee, we'll be able to have some more hands in the pot and getting some things done. So, Complete Count 2020, if you're interested, and we are trying to have a meeting again mid-November. So, thank you again, council, for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Be nice if people stayed for the whole meeting. Of course, if they really want to disrupt it, we won't miss them, I promise. I'd like to point out that three people were mentioned, and there were consistent votes to withdraw the pre-existing conditions, and a local politician was telling the truth. Now, whether somebody had an epiphany, I don't know. It's about time they do. Now, what I'd really like to talk about, I want to talk trash tonight, okay? And I prepared a little. Now, before any changes, or any further discussions of silliness, that I see it as silliness, okay? A, number one, a full account of costs on a breakdown sheet. Start showing people what they really cost. You have to have a crew to show up every week. You have to have, one, fuel, two, equipment and trucks, insurances on the trucks, insurances on the employees, wages and pensions. Once again, the crews, tipping. Note, recycling trucks and crews are not free. Recycling is free, not the trucks and the crews. Cost of additional things to throw out, like furniture, future costs. Note, what ifs with the legal dumping of trash? Now, not only did I discuss hot bottom last week, after the meeting, but when I had a little house at Chapman Lake, and it was a real darling of a place, until the old guy died, and a crazy old lady took over and drove me nuts. I was there for seven years while he was alive. The next-door neighbor had a whole shed full of garbage, had skunks coming. Well, what do you do if you can't win them? Join them, become a skunk yourself. So, I had these little bushes out in front of the place, and I used to throw to skunk little tidbits of food. He was standing out my window one day like this, begging me for a Brussels sprout, and I came home a little juiced one night, and I decided to make bread and pork chops and Brussels sprouts. At 3:00 in the morning, I got the skunk outside the window, so he got to know me, and he was like a little cat. He'd walk along the bushes, and he'd rub his whiskers against the bush, and he never sprayed me. And I even got lucky one night, he sprayed the landlord peeking in my window, this goof bought the place, and asked me to stay, and then he's, you know, really acting like an idiot. He had about a dozen people up one night, and day was going to kick my door in and teach me a lesson after he decided it was time for me to leave. Well, wouldn't advise that. And furthermore, we do have ordinances requiring recycling, and this has been an aggravation of mine forever. My next-door neighbor made a jerk out of me. He asked me about the recycling. I told him, "You have to take it down the front." We got about 30-some steps to the front door. I'd just throw it in my trunk, like, stand the barrel up and zoom around, and drop it off, and he thought that was silly, and he made me, talked to me like I was being silly. And every week, he was finagling his trash cans, including the trash in the recycling can, overflowing, and it was falling into our driveway. He was finagling it over into our driveway. You know, Section 8. It works every now and then. His wife looks like, you know, if they were, if it was his wife, I don't know. Now, a lot of discussions have been that maybe these guys could cross over if we even went to privatize. And the problem with privatization, I'll finish the sentence, please. The problem with privatization, or people crossing over, is you're asking them to become construction and engineers. Are they really going to become plumbers and backhoe operators and what-have-you, and excavators? Or are we going to hit a gas line and blow up a whole block? You know, through no fault of theirs, because they weren't properly trained... You know, through no fault of theirs because they weren't properly trained or experienced or supervised. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Fifth order, five-day motions.
Mr. Perry, any motions or comments?
I really didn't, but I'll just make one quick comment, and that's just kind of how our meetings are handled and how we would like them to be handled. There's over 70,000 people in the city. That's 70,000 different personalities, 70,000 different ideas, and a lot of times, we butt heads or we don't agree. Most of the times, most people don't agree on everything, it's impossible. But one thing that we can do is treat each other with respect, and that's something that, you know, my mom instilled in me from the very beginning. It costs nothing, it's free to respect somebody. And I make sure I respect everybody, whether we agree or we disagree, and I expect nothing less than anybody that I'm talking to as well. So let's keep that in our mind when we host our meetings. If we want something to get done for the city, and that's why we're all here, is to progress the city, whether it's how I feel it should be done or you, and we get together, we kind of homogenize and come together on a certain plan, let's do it with respect and respect each other, because nothing gets done the other way. It's too divisive, and civil discourse is never good for anybody. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Sure. I'm going to circle back to last week's comments and discussion on stormwater. Default is a word that is associated, in most cases, with the financial condition of someone or something. So simply stated, if you were in default, when you are, you were in default when you failed to meet your obligations. As we all know, and we've been, for almost a generation, the city has, had been close at times to default by failing to meet our financial obligation. So over the last four and a half years, four and a half-plus years, we have made some great strides in gaining our financial footing, as we continue to work towards finally exiting Act 47. But last week's discussion on stormwater has led me to believe we are guilty of another kind of default. Property owners and taxpayers in Scranton expect a certain level of service and responsiveness from their government, but when it comes to stormwater, we have failed to fulfill our obligations. While it has become increasingly clear our future will include a stormwater authority, either a Scranton-only authority or the more regional approach, which I fully endorse, and when that happens, it is envisioned that the resources to finally address stormwater adequately will be readily available, and we can begin to effectively deal with this issue. But that is then, and this is now. And today, when it comes to stormwater and our responsiveness to our citizens and property owners and taxpayers to even address this problem in the most basic way, we are in default. City Council's call for what might be called a Stormwater Summit is not only important, is not only overdue, is absolutely necessary. And I know Councilman Gollan will be talking a little bit more about that in a few minutes. On a completely unrelated topic, I'd like to talk about the word innovation, and how it may relate to government, and particularly Scranton city government. First, I'd like to define the word, at least what it means to me. For many, innovation is just a buzzword, a word that people tend to throw around in hopes of impressing the masses, but with no real intention of doing what is necessary to actually innovate. Innovation, put in the simplest terms, is creative ideas completed. There cannot be innovation unless the creative ideas developed are actually implemented in some way. This has always been a big stumbling block, in my eyes, in the government sector. Government, by the way, is a largest employer in the United States, and it probably ranks close to being number one in Pennsylvania and Lackawanna County in Scranton. I'm sure it's somewhere in the top two or three of all employers. With all of those employees, with budgets measured in the hundreds of millions of dollars, and in large cities in the state, the budget is probably measured in the billions, so how much is spent on R&amp;D research and development? How much is spent on innovation? The answer is zero. Zero dollars. This city is a $100 million enterprise, and we allocate zero funds towards innovation. Now, that's not to say that innovation doesn't exist in government, it does. It just has never been a sustained concept. At times, it can be driven by people that think innovation is important, but when those people are no longer part of the government, for whatever reason, innovation can and many times does cease to exist. Over the last few years, I'm proud to say that a good share of innovation at the city level, creative ideas implemented, has come from this city council. Granicus, Smart Cities, the Idea Sessions, the Scranton Home Assistance Program, and coming soon, C Click Fix, are just a few examples. Of course, that doesn't happen without willing and talented people on the administrative side of the equation as well, those that have partnered with us to get these things done. Some of those individuals have shown their own ability to innovate, and we are grateful for that. But again, when key individuals are no longer working for this city, the passion for innovation most likely will leave with them. But that is today, and what do we do about tomorrow? We need to find a creative, sustainable model of innovation. It needs to be part of our culture moving forward, a cultural shift in a city that historically has resisted change, and it must happen. The key to innovation being successful is being able to quickly put ideas into effect through pilot programs. It's that simple, and of course, it's also that difficult. When you have what appears to be a good idea, you create a pilot program. It's either successful, or it's not. You either prove the concept, or you don't. If successful, the dividends can be great, but when you are unsuccessful, what you learn through the process can be just as important. You have to be willing to take a risk, and you have to be willing to try. So that leads to this suggestion for the administration. Create a new entry in the 2019 budget called the Innovation Fund. Make 2019 the first year of what should be a long-term commitment to innovation within city government. And I finally have this challenge for the mayor. If you create this Innovation Fund at a modest $25,000 in 2019, if the mayor agrees to that, I will take a $5,000 pay cut in my salary in 2019 and have that money transferred directly into the Innovation Fund. That's 40% of my city council salary for a .025% city stake in the fund based on the 2019 budget. That's how much I believe in the promise of innovation, that's how much I believe in the promise of ideas. So, Mr. Mayor, the innovation ball is in your court, and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gollan, any motions or comments?
Yes, just a few. First, Mrs. Reed, and I know we sent this before, 1207 South Main Avenue, the gentleman was in touch with me again. There's a large sinkhole that's opened up. If we could ask the Licensing and Inspections Department and the city engineer to go out and assess that. I don't know if they have been out, we haven't heard anything back. Also, received a complaint about 516 Palm Street, overgrown grass, and a couple other issues. If we could send that out again to the Licensing, Inspections and Permits Department. Also, I usually don't do this, but I do have to fact-check Mr. Bolus. He said something that was completely false in his speech tonight, and that was that there are no minutes for council meetings. That is not true. On the city's website, there are minutes of the council meeting. Now, I didn't agree, if you was paying attention back in January when we reorganized, I didn't agree with the way that we went about that and the way that it was done, but the stenographer takes the video that is recorded by ECTV off of YouTube, and she records the minutes, and they're available on the city website. That does not include word-for-word transcription of council speakers. So what he said actually was not true. Also, I did receive a copy from Solicitor Menora last week of the Code of Ethics in draft form, so received that last week. I have had a chance the past few days to go through it. I'm pleased with a lot of the language in here. We use the City of Redding as a guide and to stay with the spirit of their law. There are some additions and deletions that I would like to make, so I'm going to hand those over to Solicitor Menora and get with him. And I did ask my colleagues in the caucus tonight if they could do the same, because I would like to get this on our agenda before the end of the year, because I think it's very important. Also, last week, we sent a letter to Mayor Courtright regarding several issues about stormwater in the city, and I'm not going to drone on about it because we've talked about it for months and months. But in the letter, I made a motion last week, and in the letter, council agreed unanimously to request a public meeting with the mayor, members of his cabinet, city engineer, representatives from Pennsylvania American Water, in order to address the city's management of these flooding events. And I did say last week that I understand that these things will not be cured overnight, but it is such now, and I've seen over the last few years, that there are spots in the city that get flooded every single time it rains. So there is no excuse for the city to continue to say that we don't have the money, or we're just going to turn a blind eye to it and, you know, let people pay thousands of dollars every year. Or actually, you know, I've heard one time, "Why did they build their house there?" That's not an excuse. So I made that motion. It was very clear that we all would like a public meeting with the mayor, with members of his administration, to address these issues because they are extremely important. So, without fail, we received a response, not from the mayor, but from another attorney, his city solicitor, in which she says, "The mayor is in receipt of your letter dated October 18th regarding the flooding issues in the 2600 block of Pittson Avenue, and I have reviewed the same with him. This matter has already been brought to me by Councilman Perry, and as promised to him, I will be meeting with him along with Council President Rogan to discuss this matter further with appropriate members of city administration and Pennsylvania American Water. I trust that they will update remaining members of council following the meeting." Well, I have a few issues with that. I'm glad that they're addressing the 2600 block of Pittson Avenue, but they did not address half of the letter in which we called for a public meeting. Now, you know, let me say, as I said last week, I have been asking very, very, very specific questions. This is not rocket science, about the flooding that occurred in the city in August, and what our response was to the state, whether we submitted for damages, are we going to get reimbursed, what that process looks like. Sent it on more than one occasion, never received a response. Now, I'm not insulted by this, because over the last four to five years, this has been common practice by the mayor and the members of his administration to ignore my requests and my questions. And as I mentioned to my colleagues in the back tonight, you know, I don't ask questions that are not relevant to either something that's on our agenda or issues that are going on in the city. I'm not asking how many shades of paint we've colored City Hall with in the last five years. I'm not asking for boxes and boxes of information just to make some poor person in City Hall go through it and get it so that I can throw it away, just to make their job a little bit harder. I'm asking questions that are important not only to council, but to the people of the city. Who I feel was insulted with this response was every single person who, over the last five to six months, has called me, emailed me, stopped me on the street, came and knocked on my door, and that I've met at their house in front of their door. Al Young, Lenny Cerebro, everybody else in Kaiser Valley, West Scranton, Manuka, Southside, North Scranton, you name it. My phone has rang off of the hook, and apparently to the mayor and other members of his administration, it doesn't matter if people spend $10,000 or $15,000 to replace water heaters, electrical panels, and everything else. It doesn't matter that we have people calling us crying because they don't have enough money to spend on all of the damage that has occurred. Do the responses, get an attorney or have another lawyer write us this letter that's not worth the paper that it's written on? So I'm going to ask again, with the support of my colleagues, to ask the mayor to do his job, come out from hiding, and face the people. We're willing to work with them, we're willing to work with the city engineer, we're willing to work with the DPW director, but we want to come up with a plan so that we have something that says, "Here's the issues, here's what we're going to do with it." We keep referring to this Arcataz study like it's going to be the Bible. It's going to tell us how to create an authority, probably so the mayor can appoint one of his cronies as the executive director and flood that with a bunch of people that donated to his campaign. I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about every single person who has contacted me, who I feel sick for, who has spent thousands of dollars, who this mayor and his administration and his attorneys continually ignore, and it is a disgrace. This isn't political, this is the right thing to do, and this administration refuses to do it, refuses to answer questions, refuses to provide simple information. And quite frankly, I'm sick of it, and I hope that my colleagues are sick of it as well. Thank you.
We did have a caucus with the Chamber of Commerce earlier today, and just to reiterate, some of what was brought up, and we did go through many of the economic development items that have taken place in the city over the last few years, and we talked about a couple other tools that may work to move the city forward as far as the economic development side goes. Just the fact that we can talk about these issues and work on these progressive plans to try to innovate, as Councilman Evans alluded to our city, is really a testament to how much good work has been done over the course of the last few years. Although people will always pick items that aren't correct and that need to be fixed, and any city in America is unfortunately always going to have problems that need to be fixed, and we need to fix every problem. But just because we are focusing, we're talking about one issue, doesn't mean that we don't care about another issue that's going on. So the focus of our caucus, like I said, was about economic development, finding new ways to get people building homes in the City of Scranton, finding ways to get businesses to come into Scranton, build new properties. And the biggest complaint that we all hear is the taxes are too high. And the good news is, over the last two years, city taxes have not gone up. Next year's budget, from what it looks like, is going to be another good year, maybe a small increase or no increase. Our TANs are looking better, so financially, we are doing significantly better in the City of Scranton. So at this point in time, we need to look at ways to grow the city. So the Chamber of Commerce did bring to us an idea that can work to help really supercharge the growth in the city, and the idea of a 10-year LURDA, I think, would push us closer to that goal. We did pass, I believe it was 2016 or 17, a three-year provision. So anyone that built a new home in the City of Scranton or a business that built a facility would have three years tax-free just on the improvement of the property. They would still pay what they were continuing to pay on their land previously. It hasn't been too successful. Three years and 10 years is a big difference. The chamber pointed to the Trips Park Development, which was done under a different program, which was the KOZ, which exempted all taxes, including wage tax, including your state taxes. This project, this program would not do that. But I do think 10 years of not paying taxes on any improvements is a huge incentive to be given out. Unfortunately, it's one that needs to be given out, because anyone that even considers building new in Lackawanna County knows that you are assessed at the absolute highest rate compared to other assessments. New construction is completely not taxed fair in Lackawanna County. That gets into another issue of needing a county-wide reassessment, which I won't get into tonight. But this incentive, which I strongly encourage the mayor to review and to propose, so we could pass this for January 1st, 2019, as the chamber is suggesting, this incentive, combined with other incentives that are currently in place, as part of the Trump tax cuts, there is a provision regarding federal opportunity zones, which part of Scranton is in that zone. And I actually wanted to announce this earlier. Evan Weiss is going to be featured, and those of you who know Evan, he's been one of our consultants that has done an excellent job in trying to help us in the city and get our finances straight. But he is the key speaker at a forum being held by the Pennsylvania Economy League. It's Learn the Economic Development and Investment Benefits of the New Federal Opportunity Zones. It's featuring Evan Weiss, opportunity zone and fund management consultant. Says, "Federal opportunity zones are designed to spur investment and designated low-income census tracts by providing substantial capital gains tax relief." This seminar is regarding learning the rules. So there is a forum and a lunch buffet as well, tickets are $20, and like I said, it's presented by the Pennsylvania Economy League. As I mentioned during the caucus, this program is great, but it's not Scranton-specific. This program is part of Scranton. It's also part of Archibald, it goes up to Blakely. So it doesn't truly give Scranton a leg up over other municipalities around us who are also trying to attract businesses, who are also trying to get people to build homes. The 10-year LURDA would do that, and it would be Scranton-specific. So I am really looking forward to working with my colleagues, working with them So I am really looking forward to working with my colleagues, working with the mayor to see what his take is on this issue. I do think it's something that council should take immediate action on. January 1st is right around the corner, so I'm very pleased with the caucus that we had with the chamber. And regarding the economic development, a comment was made that we don't know what Scranton Tomorrow is doing. We had them in two weeks ago. Scranton Tomorrow is going to be coming in quarterly. The chamber, this is, I think, their second or third time in this year as well. I've tried to make a policy of having them come in on a quarterly basis as well, because it's important what we're doing on council, and you see that every week at our meetings, but it's also important that what we're doing with our partners, partners such as the Chamber of Commerce, such as Scranton Tomorrow. And that's why I do think it's important that we continue to have those discussions at the minimum on a quarterly basis, and I appreciate them having an open-door policy with us where anytime we've reached out with questions, they've been helpful and vice versa. So we hope to continue to have those good relationships with our economic development partners. That is all.
5B for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant application by the city of Scranton to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for a local share account grant, Gaming Funds Monroe County, in the amount of $62,500 for the remediation activities at the site of the Future Pocket Park located at 248 Wyoming Avenue.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant application by the city of Scranton to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for Keystone Communities Program Grant in the amount of $50,000 for the remediation activities at the site of the Future Pocket Park located at 248 Wyoming Avenue.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction of resolution ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of Scranton Cultural Center at Masonic Temple to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority, for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Resource Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $345,405 for the project to be known as Scranton Cultural Center at Masonic Temple Elevator Safety Modernization Repairs located in Scranton, Pennsylvania, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a local share account grant contract and commitment letter with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant in the amount of $345,405 awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for introduction of resolution ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of Electric City Development LLC to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority, for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Resource Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $500,000 for the project to be known as Wyoming Avenue LSA located at 614 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18509, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a local share account grant contract and commitment letter with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant in the amount of $500,000 awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F for introduction of resolution ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of Neighbor Works Northeastern, Pennsylvania to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority, for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Resource Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $78,960 for the project to be known as Neighbor Works Home Ownership Center located at 815 Smith Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18504, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a local share account grant contract and commitment letter with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant in the amount of $78,960 awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 74, 2018, appointment of Timothy J. Woody, 540 Orchard Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18505, as a member of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority. Mr. Woody will be replacing Jennifer Herman, whose term expired June 17, 2016. Mr. Woody will be appointed to a five-year term effective August 22, 2018, and will expire August 22, 2023.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 75, 2018, appointment of Raymond J. Kelly, 10 Fawnwood Drive, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18504, to the Civil Service Commission. Mr. Kelly's effective date will be September 14, 2018. Mr. Kelly will be replacing Paul Duffy, who resigned effective May 3, 2018. Mr. Kelly's term will expire with the term of Mayor William L. Corrite.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 76, 2018, appointment of the Center for Independent Living, 1142 Sanderson Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18503, as a member of the Mayor's Commission on Disabilities, effective September 19, 2018. The Center for Independent Living will serve on the commission for a five-year term ending September 18, 2023.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption Resolution Number 77, 2018, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Department of Commonwealth Financing Authority of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a multimodal transportation funds grant to be used for the Cedar Avenue Phase 2 in the amount of $2,490,000.
What is the recommendation of the temporary chair for the Committee on Community Development?
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption Resolution Number 78, 2018, accepting a $360 donation from Uffberg and Associates LLC given to the city of Scranton Police Department Special Operations Group.
What is the recommendation of the chair for the Committee on Public Safety?
No. As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 79, 2018, appointment of Devon Draby, P. Dave, 661 North Washington Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18509, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Housing Authority. Mr. Dave will be replacing Thelma Wheeler, whose term expired September 27, 2018. Mr. Dave will be appointed to a five-year term effective October 5, 2018, and will expire on October 5, 2023.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.
7G, previously tabled, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption File of the Council Number 27, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the consolidated submission for community planning and development programs to be funded under the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program, and Emergency Solutions Grants Program for the period beginning January 1, 2019.
I would like to make a motion to amend the CD/BG activities as follows: to reduce the project in Row Number 21, Scola Learning Center, from $5,000 to $2,500; and increase the project in Row Number 7, Social Services, by the Bhutanese Cultural Foundation of Scranton from $0 to $2,500; to reduce the project in Row Number 8, Demolition of Hazardous Structures, from $75,000 to $63,000; and increase the project in Row Number 12, Weston Park, Replace Baseball Field Backstop by the City's Department of Parks and Recreation, from $19,000 to $25,000; and increase the project in Row Number 25, Maintenance and Lighting Upgrade Project by the Collum Park Little League, from $50,000 to $56,000.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of the motion to amend item 7G signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved. What is the recommendation of the chair for the Committee on Community Development?
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7G as amended.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gawn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7G as amended legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.